I can't hear. There's so much pollen in my head. It's like, I'm sure my brain is... Alright. I would like to call the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education to order for Wednesday, April 29th, 2015. I am seeking a motion to move into executive session.
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code, Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. Off we go. Alright, I would like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, April 29th, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I'm seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, board reports. Sarita, you are up first.
Hi, well, first of all, I'd like to welcome all the students who are here tonight. I'm Sarita, your student board member, so I represent all of the student voices. As decisions are made, that will affect my future and your future as well. So, I'm in 11th grade at Great Mills High School, and I'm 16 years old, which is not too far from how old most of you probably are. For my board report, I'm excited about working on planning the Student Advisory Committee. At the last safety and security meeting, we brainstormed topics, and there were conversations between students and administrators on different aspects of those topics. And the nature of the Student Advisory Committee will be dependent upon the topic that students will choose as their focus for next year. But the first step is to generate that student interest and participation in the committee. And so, one method to do that is to improve the student tab of our school system's website and add the Student Advisory Committee as a main portion, as a communication link between students to their principals, their teachers, and administrators. And so, into next year, I'm excited to build and grow that committee and hopefully, for possible years to come, figure out the logistics and a great baseline for to build upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Weefler.
I did quite a few things last two or three weeks, but the one that I really enjoyed was spring games for Special Olympics. And I've been working with the athletes on Saturday mornings to get them prepared for their big day, which was this past Friday. You know, to get them, you know, ready for their big day, and I know that they all worked hard preparing. It was held at Leonardtown High School, and kudos to the staff there for readjusting all their schedule in order to have it held at their athletic field. I got there fairly early, before 7:30 in the morning, and it was cold, as it usually is. But there were already volunteers there setting up when I got there. So, like I said, I got there before 7:30 in the morning, and I was given a great group of volunteers. They were from the naval base, they were FRC, I'm not really sure what that stands for. But they helped me set up awards area one, and that's, and they also were with me throughout the day to present awards in that area and help me keep it running smoothly, because I was in charge of that. The, the different high schools, public and private, sent students so that they could be paired up with an athlete to ensure that they got to their event. And I'm, you know, it looked like everybody was having a great time with that. Now, I didn't get to see the athletes run or do shot put or anything like that, because I was over at the awards area. But that in itself was fantastic, because I got to see all the smiles when they got their medals. We had the sheriff's department there handing out medals, Delegate Ray came over to hand out some medals, and some of the people from the naval base. I, I also want to recognize Alan Raely, who has done a tremendous job over the past several years, preparing the volun, matching the volunteers with the athletes, basically coordinating everything with the Special Olympics staff, and to ensure that the athletes have a great day. You know, he has put a tremendous amount of work into ensuring that it goes smoothly. So.
Okay. I would like to take a moment. Almost two weeks ago, Letty Dent lost a teacher, a third grade teacher. She was a fabulous woman. I don't know if I can do this. But my daughter had her. She was a little bit hard to get to know at first, she's a little shy, but once you knew her and talked to her, she liked to tell you about her travels. Her and her husband went every summer on some fabulous vacation to a wonderful island that just made you so jealous. And she was really great at bringing that back into her students. In addition, I would also like to recognize the staff, the faculty, and the staff here at the central office. In addition to dealing with their own grief when they found out, they stayed late, they made sure that all of her students knew. They trained classes with another third grade classroom that all of those students knew, so they did not have to find out the next day at school. And they did all this while working through their own grief at losing a valued coworker. Yesterday, there was a fabulous tribute to her. All of the teachers and staff and students wore her favorite team colors, which were either the New York Giants, because she was a New Jersey native, she made sure she told you that, and also the Baltimore Orioles. And the hallways were decorated, and it was a true celebration to all of her work. There are a lot of students in this county, some of who are graduating this year, that are better citizens and human beings for going through her classroom. They may not have thought that at the time, but she truly was. So, I just, sorry, but I'd just like to take a moment for her.
I'm gonna talk about another outstanding teacher. And there are many events that I could talk about, and the board agreed that we would only talk about one event for time's sake. And I'll spend my time talking about a teacher, Mrs. Nellie Lee Holcomb. Mrs. Holcomb just celebrated her 104th birthday on April 20th. And she is a great example of an outstanding teacher. Mrs. Nellie is one of the oldest and healthiest citizens in Southern Maryland. She retired from St. Mary's County Public Schools, and she retired after 23 years of teaching here. She taught at two schools, Pioneer Point Elementary School and Greenville Knowles Elementary School. Since Miss Nellie just celebrated her 104th birthday on April 20th, let's all give her a huge round of applause. And, Miss Nellie was featured in the Enterprise newspaper. Here's a photograph of her with her son and her grandson. For 10 years, she taught 4th through 7th grade in a one-room schoolhouse in Tennessee. Miss Nellie married Smokey Holcomb, who was in the US Navy, and her husband, Smokey, died in 2004, after 70 years of marriage. That's wonderful. They have one son, Jack Holcomb, who is a proud graduate of Great Mills High School and a retired engineer. Jack is married to Karen Holcomb, who is also a retired SESer at Pax River, and they live in California, Maryland. Miss Holcomb is still very active and very healthy. She loves talking about education, teaching and students, and education is her passion still. She loves hearing from friends and students. Her daughter-in-law Karen said, "Nellie rejoices each time she gets cards or letters." Miss Nellie loves it when people take time to remember her and take time to reminisce with her. We need to do those things when our teachers and special people can recognize it, and we need to do it while they're living and healthy and can appreciate it and accept it. Her daughter-in-law says, "Nellie loved being a teacher." And here is a poem that is written by an unknown author called Wonderful Teacher, which I dedicate to 104-year-old Miss Nellie. "With a special gift for learning and with a heart that deeply cares, you added a lot of love to everything you shared. And even though you mean a lot, you never know how much, for you helped to change the world through every life you touch. You sparked the creativity in the students whom you taught and helped them strive for goals that could not be bought. You are such a special teacher that no words can truly tell how much you're valued for the work you've done so well." End of poem. Many of us usually say we will take time to write that special teacher, or any teacher, to thank them for the many sacrifices they have made, and to thank them for all they've done for us. Teaching is the greatest profession. We all started with a teacher. This is an opportunity for you to say thank you to Miss Nellie, even if you don't know her or know her, to send her a belated birthday card. And if you want to do it, you can send it to Miss Nellie, just address it to the Board of Education, "Attention, Miss Nellie," and we will make sure that she gets those cards, or if you want to send an email to her, because she would love to get it. And while you're doing that, to the students and the audience and the parents, please take time to thank a teacher for what they're doing for your students. They spend the best hours of the day with your child, trying to make that student a productive member of society. And I don't know where we would be without teachers. So, it means a lot to them to have a written note or a card that's handmade. They keep those things and treasure them forever. So, when they're feeling down, they just open that box of mementos and they read all those wonderful cards. I have wonderful letters that students have written to me that I've had for years, and it means more to me than anything to just open that, it's a big file cabinet, and pull out those cards and hand-drawn pictures of students. It means so much to me, more than anything. So, I know she would love to hear from students, active and retired teachers, or anyone in the community. She would love to hear from you. So, the address is, just Board of Education, "Attention, Miss Nellie, Post Office Box 641." Or have we changed that?
Sweet 109.
Ooh.
Sweet 109.
109.
109.
23160.
Oh, 23160 Mokley Street. So, we don't have a post office box anymore. We're saving money. Being efficient. We don't have a post office box. So, I'm gonna say it again, address it to the Board of Education, Miss Nellie, Sweet 109, 23160 Mokley Street, Leonard Town, Maryland, 20650. Attention, Miss Nellie, and we will make sure she get it and thank a teacher today. Thank you.
I recently attended the All County Honor Elementary, Middle, and High School Honor Jazz Band Concert. It was absolutely wonderful. They, for the high school students, they brought in a guest conductor, a professor at Towson University, and, and he did a, just a really magnificent job in sharing with those students exactly what jazz is. And rather than having them play specific songs, he really worked with them to understand what it means to riff on various melodies, and they did a fantastic job. And then, the elementary and middle school students, not only did they play very well, again, with a guest conductor for the middle school students, I believe, but many of our music teachers across the system added their musical talents to, 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 to the presentation, and very enjoyable, and, and, you know, certainly trying to stay still in your seat was a difficult task, but congratulations to all of the students who had the opportunity to participate in that, and, and many thanks and congratulations to the teachers who also added their talents to it as well. Thank you.
And that was all about improvisation, and I have about two pages of things that I could talk about. I feel as though you have, you're all here for a purpose. Tonight is, tonight is a really special night for us, because it's a, it's a night, it's a night of recognition, and it starts really the cycle of recognition that, that happens in April and May and into June as we, as we draw our year to a conclusion. So, I'm going to just file my report, it's got a whole, I had a lot of fun bringing words, and I would like to say that the Education Support Professional of the Year, the, the recognition that was held last week was just fantastic, and the Enterprise wrote a, wrote a really lovely story, and so, a shout-out to Miss Tina Dial at Great Mills High School, and Melissa Tran at Park Hall, and even honorable mention to Emma Ruiz at Margaret Brent Middle School. Fantastic. It's, when you realize it takes all of the hands to make the work light, it's a, it was a really, it was a really great event, and thank you very much for the people who organized, and thank you very much for the people who are recognized. But with that, I think we should start talking about bringing some people up and recognizing them. So, for, there's a lot of you here. So, what we'd like to do is, as we're bringing each group up, and we're going to recognize, perhaps read a proclamation, hand out awards, at the conclusion of that, we've made arrangements for our producer slash photographer, Miss Mary Ann Williams, will pop out, she'll come out and take a picture, and then, you will not offend any of us if you then depart. You can certainly stay to hear the next recognized group, but, but if you, after the recognition of your group, and the photo is taken from Miss Mary Ann, you wish to depart, please understand that we understand that it is a gorgeous evening out there, and you are probably quite eager to get out there and frolic in the tree pollen.
Okay, all me?
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, first up, Cause Theater of the College of Southern Maryland, Mr. Michael Wyant. He was just here.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Wyant.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The purpose of this evening is to provide you with a brief review of the school-based performances provided by the Cause Theater, the College of Southern Maryland, the St. Mary's County Public Schools during the course of this school year. They did some outstanding performances, and we have 10 representatives from the Cause Theater this evening that I'm gonna call forward, many others that could not be present for the sake of time, I'm just gonna give those certificates to the director, and he can deliver them to the students. So, without any further ado, first off, Mr. Keith Height, Director, Cause Theater, so. Mr. Aaron Johnson? Come on down, Aaron. You gotta walk the red carpet and stand on the red carpet. Mr. Smith, I did tell them all they have to stand on the red carpet.
I, I understand that you think the theater people would take direction.
Very much advantage of that, yes.
And would understand red carpet.
Chris Fleming. Come on down, Chris. Thank you, sir. Josh Pierre? Thanks, Josh, for everything. Kate Sine? Thank you, Kate. Katie Fisher? Kaylee Hatch? Macy Richardson? J.R. Cook? And Ms. Vicky Pawalitz. Did I pronounce that correctly? I was gonna ask Mr. Height to say a few words, and he's gonna set the tone with a very short video to show you.
Good evening, board members, thank you, and superintendent, thank you very much for letting us be a part of your school system and your school year. We had over 30 actors giving their time. We estimated it's about 1,500 hours of community service that they did, driving at, oh, they didn't realize that morning elementary schools started so early. And once they got to college, they didn't know there was two eights in a day. But they did get up, and they were really great, they were, they had a lot of fun. One of the clips we're gonna show you right now is from Sneetches, which is our last play. If you didn't see, it was a really great show. If you saw it, yay, thank you. And it's the, where you're getting ready to, where they're switching the bellies for the thing.
Fall back, see how you do. Self-directing.
Board members, I am so very proud of this partnership. The Cause Theater has been with us for a number of years now. We've touched on everything from dating violence to bullying, diversity, a number of topics. It's a tremendous outfit, they've done us a great service. 12,000 of our students this year saw the productions, over 12,000 of our students, and as Mr. Height said, over 1,500 volunteer hours. As a small token of our appreciation, because it certainly doesn't reimburse them for all their expenses, I do have a $1,500 check from St. Mary's County Schools to present to the Cause Theater, so. And with that, we thank you very much, thank you all so much. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do we have a court, let's get you all up and get the picture corrected, Mr. Height, you need to get in, Mr. Wyant on the other side, let's make sure that we get this. We're really seeing whether we can put this all together. You are all supposed to take stage direction, be able to arrange yourself accordingly. Very nice. A fabulous group of Sneetches and... Thank you so much, thank you for your patience as well, they've been here since 4:30. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Next up, the Smecco Mathematics Challenge. I see Locar sneaking up there, go ahead.
Good evening. The annual elementary Smeck, the Smecco Elementary Math Challenge was held on March 21st at Margaret Brent Elementary School for 4th and 5th grade students. We had 17 teams compete, packed out the auditorium, we had a ton of people, they had a lot of fun. Of the 17 schools that competed, 16 were public schools and one was non-public. And I'd like to announce the winners that are here tonight. The competition is divided into two parts, students take an individual test, and then students take a team test, and they work together. The individual test scores and the team test scores are combined to find the team winners, but the individual winners, who did the best on the team test for 4th grade, were, 3rd place is Sean Gregory, who's not here tonight, 2nd place Teddy Bates from Leonardtown Elementary School. And 1st place was Ben Dodge, also from Leonardtown Elementary School. And Michael Solely, the coach, is here in the audience, as well as Ms. Denise Eichel, the principal. Alright, the individual top finishers for 5th grade were 3rd place Jake Weller from Leonardtown, he was not able to make it tonight. The 2nd place finisher was Father Andrew White, and our 1st place finisher was Emily Bolton from Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School. I'm sorry, Mr. Solely. Sorry, Mr. Solely, he's the Benjamin Bannaker coach. Then we have a team competition for 5th grade, actually Father Andrew White won, and for 4th, 1st place for 4th grade, the team from Letty Marshall Dent won, so that's a nice thing for the guys. On that team, we have Melin Bell. Come on up, Melin. We have Emily Bulky. Emma, I'm sorry, Emma. We have Samantha Cusick. Ciara Francine. It might be easier to come down the red carpet in the middle. Trent Gerhart. Luke Schaefer. James Veatch. Bryce Dufresne. And finally, Mikhail Yudnovich. I'd like to also recognize Alicia Ortega, the coach, and Ms. Kelly Courtney, the principal. So, that's all of the math challenge recognition.
Fantastic, let's get you all pushed in so we can get a really good picture with all of you. Oh, that's so nice. That's so nice, you guys look so good. Fantastic job. Now, watch us on YouTube, come out and watch, and you can actually watch all your children come down, and it's all on video, we need to have viewers. So, you need to watch yourself on YouTube. You all look fantastic, you've all been on camera since you've walked on the red carpet, so please make sure that you, you visit us on the website and go to the YouTube and see yourselves, because you're all great. Thank you very, very much, congratulations. Very nicely done. That concludes the recognition of you guys. Fantastic. Thank you. You guys are great. Very nicely done. Now, remember, I won't be offended if you...yeah, okay. Well, before, we've been here. People have been, you know, for an hour and forty-five minutes. And you've been so polite and waited. And this is just recognizing that there might be other places that you wanna be.
Okay. Smecco Math Count awards. Right?
Yes. Good evening, Board. How you doing, parents? On February 7th, middle school math... students from Chesapeake Public Charter School, Esperanza Middle School, Leonardtown Middle School, Margaret Brent Middle School, and Spring Ridge Middle School represented St. Mary's County Public Schools at the Southern Maryland Chapter Math Counts Competition at Calvert Middle School in Prince Frederick, Maryland. A mix of nineteen public and non-public middle schools from Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's Counties, consisting of over a hundred and thirty students, participated in this event sponsored by Smecco. Middle school teams that finished in the top five overall and individual participants that scored in the top twenty-five percent at the regional competition were invited to participate in the Math Counts Maryland State Competition that was held on March 4th, 2015, at Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore, Homewood Campus in Baltimore, Maryland. Tonight, we are recognizing St. Mary's County Public School students whose outstanding achievements placed them as a top-five team or in the top twenty-five percent at the regional competition and participated in the Math Counts Maryland State Competition. Let's first recognize everybody that participated. Not everybody was here tonight, but let's give them a nice, big round of applause. There's a lot of, uh...a lot of brains. Energy was in that room that day. Unfortunately, I was in class. I wasn't able to attend. But, um, there were people that were... that informed me about how much, uh...how much energy was in that room. And I've been there in the past, and I've seen it firsthand. So from the Chesapeake Public Charter School, I'd like to recognize Derek Nichols, top twenty-five percent of all individual participants. Also from Chesapeake Public Charter School, Hannah Torgensen, top twenty-five percent of all individual participants. Coaches from Chesapeake Public Charter School were Ms. Torgensen, who's in the back, and Ms. Taryn Long, who's not here this evening. From Esperanza Middle School, we had a middle school play tonight. So unfortunately, a lot of those individuals are at the play. But Margaret Holmes, Emmy Stats, and McKenna Randall participated and were in the second-place team overall out of nineteen teams. So let's give them a round of applause. Conlon McConave is playing baseball this evening, so he's not here. So let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Justin Martin, top twenty-five percent of all individual participants from Esperanza Middle School. Allison Robinson, top twenty-five percent of all individual participants. Coaches from Esperanza Middle School, Mr. Chris Adams, who's not here this evening, and Ms. Gabby Seavock, who is here today. Margaret Brent Middle School, Austin DiStefanis is not here this evening. Let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Craig Mojareski was the coach. Spring Ridge Middle School, Tucker Protsman, top twenty-five percent of all individual participants. And the coaches from Spring Ridge Middle School were Dr. Gary Robinson and Bridget Dunbar from Spring Ridge Middle School. Thank you. So that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right, push in. Looked good. That's it. Math Counts. Thank you very much, parents. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you very much for the coaches and the parents and our administrators who've come out. It really speaks highly of your commitment to STEM, STEM education and mathematics. And I know that that particularly makes our county supervisors, Ms. Becky Locer and Mr. Alex Jaffers, so very, very happy. And I love that some of our mathematicians are, right now, taking the stage because fine arts and theater arts are still very, very important. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thus concludes the recognition of you ladies and gentlemen. Again, go home, watch yourself on YouTube. We'll hopefully be posting it by the middle of the day tomorrow. And look, Mr. Jaffers is still there.
I know. You're just rolling right into the...keep going.
We're trying to get, uh...get this moving. I will stay up here and recognize the Smecco Teachers of the Year for Math and Science. I will start the presentation. Every year, Smecco recognizes three outstanding mathematics and science teachers from each of the Southern Maryland counties. Nominees are evaluated using a rigorous rubric, including innovative pedagogy aligned with the Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards, system leadership, and community involvement. To be honored as a Smecco Teacher of the Year in math or science, that is a high accomplishment. The following teachers were honored by Smecco as the mathematics and science teachers of the year. And each respective supervisor will present those individuals.
All right. I'd like to start with Ms. Colby Garrig, third-grade teacher at Chesapeake Public Charter School. And Ms. Kristy Stahlcheck from Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School.
See, you shouldn't have changed.
We just watched the star-bellied Sneetches and the dressing and the different... that is...you guys are fantastic. That is...even your shoes. That is really... And just so we're very clear, where did you guys go to school? Where did you graduate from? What, high school? Thank you.
I didn't get the memo, but I'll keep moving.
We'd have a lot more people here if you were dressed similarly, Mr. Jaffers.
And I don't think you graduated from Leonardtown, so.
No, I did not. I did not. I taught there. I didn't graduate, so. Yes, probably next to Mr. Smith when he was teaching English. But I digress. Secondary mathematics, I'd like to recognize Ms. Dawn Millerick from Leonardtown Middle School. Also from the middle school ranks, Ms. Mary Von Fricken, Esperanza Middle School. Good evening, Board of Ed. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor tonight to recognize the Science Teachers of the Year for Smecco, starting with middle school, Mr. Michael Gallo. And for high school, high school, Mr. Guy Barbado.
All right. Now we need them to push in. And you'd think the gentleman would flank on both sides so that the picture would be balanced. While we're getting the picture just right, thank you very much for the principals who've come out as well. And recognize that it is the contribution of teachers, and particularly those that we recognize, who we recognize this evening, that allow and perpetuate and grow the great children that we just saw being... competing and being recognized at the county and state level. So your impact on students is felt every single day. And may you all live to a hundred and four and teach for all those years in St. Mary's County. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next recognition, St. Mary's County Public Schools and the College of Southern Maryland Partnership, Ms. Melissa Charbonnet.
Dr. Harris, would you like to join me? Good evening, Board. Good evening, community members. We'd like to take this opportunity tonight to recognize a partnership. We're recognizing our students and our teachers, but critical to the success of our students is one of the partnerships that we have with the College of Southern Maryland. St. Mary's County Public Schools has two very important programs that cannot exist. Thank you for that tech. We have two very important partnerships, two programs. One, one is called our Gateway Program, which is our program for our students eighteen to twenty-one years old. These students attend college at Southern Maryland. We have a classroom there. And what is very critical to this program is that they have an opportunity to work on their post-secondary goals in order to assist them in living and working independently. Critical to this is the opportunity for our students to be with age-appropriate peers. They participate at the College of Southern Maryland in recreational activities. They are there at the Student Union. They are working... they're mingling and working with the kids at the college every single day. The second program that we have is a class that students participate in. They receive continuing education college credits. And these are students who are pursuing a high school diploma and are at risk of dropping out. Ten to eleven students participate in this class each semester. Since the inception of this class, which the title of it is "Life After High School", one hundred percent of the students have completed the course and have gone on to graduate on time with a Maryland high school diploma. In the fall...last fall, the Maryland State Department of Education has a leadership conference every year. And each year, they ask local educational agencies to participate and to provide... kind of share with our colleagues. This past year, St. Mary's County was asked to be the presenters at the Fall Leadership Conference. And we were recognized as game changers in the state of Maryland for these two programs. It was presented in a forum, and we were one of two counties that participated as an example. So I just wanted to take this opportunity tonight to recognize the leadership role that Dr. Harris has in making sure that we're allowed to continue this partnership. And the kids, I want you to know, know Dr. Harris. He is visible on the campus, and the kids know who he is. So I just want to take this opportunity to recognize this partnership and recognize the leadership role that he has in continuing this.
Well, move them in front...in front of the... between the two flag...there we go. That's it. That's very nice. And while the photo's being taken, Dr. Harris, it is...it's a testament to your personal involvement with students at the College of Southern Maryland. But it's also important for all of us to draw attention to the great community in which we live and the fact that we continue to serve and we work with all of our students. And we really do focus on how they transition to life after high school. It was a...I had the opportunity of having lunch with all those ladies and gentlemen. It really was a fantastic program with fantastic staff from CSM. It really is quite a testament. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. May we continue our partnership for a hundred and four years.
We have a second recognition tonight. And I am very pleased to say that... was it four years ago? Three years ago, the Citizens Advisory Committee for Special Education asked if they could take the opportunity in the springtime to recognize individuals who have provided an exceptional moment, time, experience for their children. And tonight, I'm gonna turn it over to our president, Elizabeth Snyder. We have awards where we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the very important individuals who touch the lives of our children every single day.
Be very careful to touch anything up here, so. Okay. Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Snyder. I'm the chair for Casey, the Citizens Advisory Committee for Special Education. We'd like to thank the Board for being a part of our third annual Rise Up Award. The Rise Up Award was created to recognize members of the special education system who have truly gone to an extraordinary effort to contribute to the growth, happiness, and general well-being for our children with disabilities. Working with the children with special needs requires a lot of patience and determination. Not everyone has the gift to be successful in this field. No matter what they may be going through in their personal lives, these professionals come to work every day with a smile on their face, and their hearts are filled with compassion for our children. Listening to the testimonies of the families whose lives changed...life's changed from the acts of their compassion is an honor and our privilege to recognize them in front of you tonight. Although it was hard to select a few from our nominee submissions, we have chosen three. When I call your name or your school, if you can please just come on up and stand on the red carpet. Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School. We have Carolyn Steiner, Judy Coleman Kla...sorry. Sharice Bliler and Donna Heidelbeck. And when they get settled, I do have a little thing about it just so you can have a little information on what the family nominated them for. A family of a fifth grader who attends Bannaker and whose child relies on full support in all aspects of her daily life due to her disability would like to thank the staff and recognizes that the love, care, and support that their child receives is phenomenal. This child was not expected to make it past the age of two, but she celebrated her twelfth birthday in January. The family attributes... the family attributes the success of their child's extended health to the doctors and the attentiveness that this staff members gave to their child to get the...to get ahead of any medical concerns. Congratulations and thank you.
I just want you all to know that in addition to recognizing them today, they've spent the day with a visitor from the Maryland State Department of Education. And as wonderful as we all are, it's a little bit nerve-wracking to have somebody sit in your classroom and take a look. But at the...when we did the debriefing... take a look, but at the, when we did the debriefing this afternoon, she came in and just had nothing but glowing reports to say about what's happening at Benjamin Banneker.
Our next is going to be from Chesapeake Public Charter, Holly Colabro. I'm not nervous. The family of a child in kindergarten at Chesapeake Public Charter would like to thank Ms. Colabro, a physical education teacher who always looked at their son for what he can do despite the delays and physical limitations of his disability. This student always enjoyed sports but was, would be intimidated to try any sports that were difficult for him. Ms. Colabro's enthusiasm and endless encouragement helped this student to achieve many goals that the family did not even know that he was capable of, like doing a handstand. Ms. Colabro's positive attitude has helped their child, his overall attitude towards school and the challenges that a long day can bring. The student recently started T-ball team with typical children at the recommendation that he was ready. Oh, let's see now, I can't get there. He had his first game, and he was an absolute success. Thank you and congratulations. No idea how I'm going to make it through the next one. Lenartown Elementary, Christine Newsline, and Lindsay Kitchen. Do you want to go stand with them? All right, well, this is mine. My daughter's in kindergarten at Lenartown Elementary, and I'd like to thank Ms. Newsline and Ms. Kitchen, this sounds horrible, for their hard work in integrating her child with Down Syndrome into the general education classroom. I'll get there. Their child, Abby has grown both socially and intellectually due to their dedication and positive attitudes. You provided help when needed, and you pushed her when she wanted to give up, and I can't read that anymore right now with her, but I appreciate you guys so much. No, I think that'd be, oh, yeah.
One thing for sure, when Ms. Newsline and Ms. Kitchen, along with the team at Lenartown Elementary, have raised the bar for any other school that their child will attend in the future, the winners are also going to receive a family toolbox, which is the project that our Casey took on this year and has put together a series of bags. In these bags, we have provided tools for families at home. Through another partnership with the library, with the public library, families will be able to check these out, and we'll give each teacher one of the, one of the toolboxes that we've put together. Thank you.
I do have one more to try to get through. She went over that. The winners will work with us to determine the best items for the family toolbox, and they can utilize in the classroom, and they'll also allow the parents opportunities to use as well. So, we'll go over those with the winners. We also wanted to, the families of the Citizens Advisory Committee would like to thank Ms. Charbonnet, the Director, for her dedication and commitment that she gives to our families throughout the year. Ms. Charbonnet resonates with true compassion for our families, which is essential to understanding that our children are being well taken care of despite the challenges within the budget and staffing crisis, and we want to say thank you.
Casey and all, and all people involved, thank you as well. It means a great deal when we, when we recognize students and when we recognize our staff, the Board of Education, and teachers and leaders, but when parents and communities actually come out to recognize staff and to tell the story, that is a beautiful thing. You have beautiful children. May you always have a fantastic home here in St. Mary's County. Nicely done. Nicely done. Thank you.
She likes the red carpet.
Okay. Ms. J. L. Farrell, Teacher Appreciation Week.
That's hard to act to follow. Well, at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Wachulla Adams, Ms. Anna Loughlin, Mr. Michael Denny, and Ms. Sabra Skoglowski to please come forward on the red carpet, of course.
Mr. Denny, you've been here long before me. You can stand wherever you like, sir.
May 4th through May 8th is designated as National Teacher Appreciation Week by the National Parent Teacher Association. Teacher Appreciation Week is not only a way for students to celebrate their teachers, but also for people to learn more about teaching as a profession and its merits worldwide. The origins of National Teacher Appreciation Day can be traced back to former First Lady, Eleanor Roosevelt, who persuaded the 81st Congress to create a national day celebrating teachers. The theme for this year is "Great Teachers Make Great Public Schools." As representatives of all the outstanding educators in St. Mary's County Public Schools, Mr. Smith will present a copy of the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation to Ms. Anna Loughlin, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, and will also recognize several award winners, including Ms. Wachulla Adams, the 2015 St. Mary's County recipient of the Washington Post's Distinguished Educational Leadership Award winner, Mr. Michael Denny, the 2015 recipient of the Washington Post's Agnes Meyer Outstanding and Ms. Sabra Skoglowski, the 2015-16 Maryland State Teacher of the Year Representative, representing St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence long after our school days are only memories, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the week of May 4th through the 8th, 2015, as Teacher Appreciation Week and urges all citizens of St. Mary's County to take time to honor those who give the gift of knowledge through teaching, signed this 29th day of April 2015 by all of the Board members, and thank you, each and every one of you. Thank you. Break a little bit because I understand Ms. Loughlin has words to bring on behalf of Teacher Appreciation Week, so I invite her to the podium.
The 17th century English essayist, Joseph Addison, had this to say about the value of education. "Education is a companion; no misfortune can depress, no crime can destroy, no enemy can alienate, no despotism can enslave. At home a friend, abroad an introduction; in solitude a solace, and in society an ornament. It chastens vice, guides virtue, and gives at once grace and government to genius. Without it, what is man?" What can we say about those people who bring us this treasure which separates us from all creation? Well, I found a piece written by a woman named Natasha Walitzer in the Huffington Post, and I'd like to share a little of it with you now. A teacher believes there are no bad students, just challenging ones. A teacher will question and teach her students how to question. A teacher purchases extra supplies at back-to-school sales because she knows there will be someone who needs them. A teacher is saddened when a child with potential wastes it and sympathizes with the child who wants nothing more than to be able to get it. A teacher will stay up late grading papers and projects, writing comments, and giving suggestions. A teacher will step in front of an intruder to protect his students, the children, someone else's baby. A teacher will accommodate for a child's needs so that that child can be successful. A teacher will tell any child, "Good job," for any simple or complex achievement. A teacher will make students cry, laugh, get really angry, and question why, and a teacher will cry, laugh, and get really angry and question why with that student. A teacher educates every student to achieve to his or her best and does their best to vanquish all roadblocks to that student's success. A teacher often comes to work when it is still dark outside and will leave when it is dark outside again. A teacher works on weekends, on holidays, during the summer. A teacher goes to graduation and hugs that student who disrespected them all year and will whisper in that student's ear, "I am so proud of you. I knew you could do it." A teacher thanks the parents for their support even when they do not get it. A teacher doesn't tell a learning-disabled student, "Try harder," but simply says, "Try again" because she knows that student is already trying hard. A teacher can never leave their work at the office. A teacher's day does not end when the buses pull out. A teacher builds relationships and teaches the students to build relationships. A teacher teaches students, not subject matter. A teacher never gives up. A teacher is a gift. Cherish them. Thank you.
Ms. Loughlin, that could not have been said any better. Thank you. You picked them out, though you did a really good job finding just the right words. So, thank you.
Okay. School Nutrition Employee Week. Mr. Michael Jones.
School Nutrition Employee Week is celebrated nationally, May 4th through May 8th, and provides a wonderful opportunity to recognize those folks that are working behind the scenes in meeting the nutritional needs of our students so that they can be prepared to learn each and every day. Through the National School Breakfast Program, our staff are serving more than 4,400 breakfast meals every day. Breakfast is served at all schools. Breakfast in the classroom is served in nine locations. Staff support promotions that teach nutritional messages. The National School Lunch Program and After-School Snack Program, 8,200 lunch meals and 200 snack meals are served every day. Something unique about the relationships between the cafeteria staff and students is they develop lasting relationships that, that go from grade to grade. So, the whole time they're in a school building, the lunch ladies don't change, and they also create fun learning environments for students. Through the Farm-to-School Program, students are educated about where their food comes from, how it is produced, and the benefits of eating a healthy diet. The program seeks to bring more locally grown foods to school lunches. During the 2013-2014 school year, approximately 27% of our purchases of fresh fruits and vegetables were locally grown. Through the Somber Food Service Program, we support programs like Lunch and Learn, and we provide nutritious meals during the summer months when school is not regularly in session. Tonight, we're going to be also recognizing those schools that have been awarded Gold Stars from the St. Mary's County Health Department. This program was established to recognize those food service establishments in the county that have demonstrated superior food service safety and sanitation during the calendar year. The Health Department inspected more than 500 food service establishments during 2014, and only a select few, 40, received the coveted Gold Star Award. St. Mary's County Public Schools received 19 of those awards. With us tonight are two representatives from the Health Department that are here to help recognize our schools, and it's Mr. Darrell Calvano and Mr. Ken Ingman. If you would join me up here, please, at this time. We have, as I mentioned, 19 schools that are being recognized. Unfortunately, not everyone was able to be here tonight for their presentation. But I'm going to be calling off all the names, all the schools, and then those that are here, please come forward when your school is called to be recognized up front here. So, our first school to be recognized is Banneker Elementary. Oh, I'm sorry. Darrell, you had a minute. You were going to talk about the program a little bit.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh... Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come this evening and talk a little bit about the Gold Star Program. Most importantly is to recognize all the facilities here at the Board of Education, the outstanding job that they've done in the calendar year 2014. The Gold Star Program was initiated in 2007, and it has a fairly strict set of parameters that it takes in order to comply. Every food service licensed facility in the county, which there's just under 500, are eligible at the beginning of the year. During the course of all the inspections that Mr. Ingman and his, his other team members conduct during the year, based on violations and, and other parameters that have to do with food safety courses that, that are required, facilities are actually disqualified over the course of the year. So, out of the nearly 500 that are in the county from franchises to grocery stores, institutional settings, we have about 40 that have been awarded in 2014. The amazing part of that is the school and the dedication that all the employees have in nutrition services have met almost 50% of the awards that we just handed out this Public Health Week. So, I would say congratulations in earnest to the, the hard work that all of you do every day. Based on the numbers of, of meals served, it's, it's pretty remarkable. So, I congratulate you. Thank you.
So, our first school is Banneker Elementary School. And Banneker, there's no one here for Banneker Elementary, but well done. Chesapeake Public Charter School. Chesapeake Public Charter School. Dynard Elementary School.
Stop, 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 stop. We want everybody to stand. When we get all together, we'll push together, get a great picture at the end with your proclamation, and you might want to mute. Why don't you mute the LCD projectors? Well, so you're not blinding poor Mr. Ingman.
Fantastic.
So, our next school is Dynard Elementary School. Fairlead Academy 1. Fairlead Academy 2. George Washington Carver Elementary School. Great Mills High School. Greenview Knowles Elementary School. Hollywood Elementary School. Lenner Town Elementary School. Lady Marshall Dent Elementary School. Lexington Park Elementary School. Mechanicsville Elementary School. Oakville Elementary School. Park Hall Elementary School. Piney Point Elementary School. Ridge Elementary School. Spring Ridge Middle School. Want to pause just for a second while we're at Spring Ridge Middle School. This year, there were seven schools that participated in the Maryland Breakfast Challenge, and this was supported by a nonprofit organization, Share Our Strength, and the purpose was to increase awareness of how school breakfast prepares students to learn every day, and also with the goal of increasing breakfast participation. Spring Ridge Middle School won the contest of our seven schools. And last school we recognized is Town Creek Elementary School.
Just push in picture. You have the resolution.
Yes, sir. There's still more of the presentation. There's Healthy U.S. Schools.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
One more round of applause for this group. This year, we want to recognize two schools that were certified as Healthy U.S. Schools, and they joined the ranks of four other schools that are currently Healthy U.S. Schools. The goal of the Healthy U.S. School Challenge is to improve the health of children by creating and sustaining healthier school environments in schools. Participating schools make changes to improve the quality of the foods served, provide students with nutrition education, physical education, and physical activity. Schools are recognized nationally for their achievement. At this time, I'd like to invite up Ms. Sherry Cutsonis. Are you here, Sherry?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Sherry Cutsonis is a Food Service Coordinator in the Department of Food and Nutrition Services, and the two schools that are being recognized tonight are two of her schools that she monitors. And Sherry does a fantastic job with assisting those schools to be ready to serve meals every day to our students. And so, at this point, we want to identify those two schools as Green Holly Elementary School at the bronze level and Lexington Park Elementary School at the silver level. Ms. Adams, if you could stay up here with us, please. Some of the recognition material provided by the United States Department of Agriculture is the check that you see that we handed them. That's actually not a signed check with accounting data, but is representative of a couple of checks that'll be coming from USDA, and at the silver level, it's $1,000, and at the bronze level, 500, to be used to for nutritious meals and supporting their efforts in providing a healthier environment. A couple items that we didn't have that I've been trying to get from USDA, but they just haven't arrived. There's a very nice banner that they get to display at the school. It's a six-foot banner, and then also a plaque. And those items are on their way here, and we'll be able to provide those as soon as they're here. Also with us tonight is Ms. Andrea Hamilton, and Ms. Hamilton is here to present trophies for our six Healthy U.S. Schools. And has a few words to say.
Just a few. So, my name's Andrea Hamilton, and I work for MedStar St. Mary's Hospital, and I worked under the Community Transformation Grant, and I helped. I worked with Lisa Brubaker of Nutrition Services, and we worked within three Title I schools to help them achieve the Healthy U.S. Schools Challenge. And, you know, it was a little difficult back and forth, so we came up with some liaisons, so I was able to work with some of the public school employees as well. So, that was great, and I really enjoyed being in the schools and working with the kids. We were able to do some taste testings, and, you know, either they like it or they don't, and they tell you all about it. So, that was a lot of fun. And then we helped to, I helped provide some bulletin board information and just some things that they could continue to put up in the schools over the years. So, the awards that I have came from something called the Fit and Healthy St. Mary's Coalition, and that started with the Community Transformation Grant, and it was a group of local businesses interested in helping to make St. Mary's a healthier place to live. And it's now part of something called the Healthy St. Mary's Partnership that is sponsored by the Health Department. You can go to their website and see a little bit more about it. But there's four action teams, and one of the action teams is called Heal, which is Healthy Eating, Active Living, and we would love some more members. So, you can take a look at it, and you can come to our meetings if you're interested. So, the six schools in St. Mary's County that we have awards for are Evergreen Elementary School.
Next school is George Washington Carver. Green Holly Elementary School. Lenner Town Elementary School. Lexington Park Elementary School. And Park Hall Elementary School. How about another round of applause for this group? Please stay up here, because with this backdrop, we want to read the proclamation.
School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week, whereas nutritious meals are an essential part of the school day and the school food service operation, by virtue of the service provided to students and staff, is an integral part of the educational environment of St. Mary's County Public Schools, and whereas the staff of St. Mary's County Public Schools' Department of Food and Nutrition Services is committed to promoting wellness and providing healthful nutritious meals to the county's children, and whereas over 2,100,000 meals served each year to the students in St. Mary's County Public Schools as part of the National School Lunch Program is testimony to the valuable contribution by food service personnel to the educational process. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County does hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through 8th, 2015, as the School Nutrition Employee Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools and in the community. All school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this week as School Nutrition Employee Week and participate in its observance. Signed this 29th day of April, 2015, by the Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Get the whole group up. We'll get one picture with Mr. Jones, and then we'll...
Break. We'll break.
Yeah, the whole, the whole group.
Come on.
Mr. Jones, please, you as well. The whole group. Let's have a whole group up.
I was going to say, Ms. Summers got one of those awards for Evergreen. Come on down.
Fantastic. Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. It's 7:30. We will take a 10-minute break. 7:40, everyone.
Come right back.
Back on.
All right.
To reconvene the meeting, the next item on our agenda, public hearing. We have none? Public comment?
None.
None. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First action item is Dr. Jeff Marr, Race to the Top, running over there. In the sake of time, look at that.
It's already lined up.
All right. So, we are in the final year of Race to the Top funding to the State Department, and as they are working through the expenses for, the final expenses for that grant, they are issuing sub-grants for some of those remaining funds, and our allocation for some of those funds is $55,980, and these were aligned under Program Project 1732, which is the comprehensive assessment grant. So, this allocation is specifically for the purchase of individual student devices or computers to allow for the online administration of both formative and summative assessments and activities and daily classroom instruction. So, we are asking for your approval to accept these funds so that we can use these for the computers to support instruction and assessment, and these would be, these funds would be dedicated solely to that purpose. So, again, we're asking for your approval of acceptance of this grant and the applicable budget to submit to the county commissioners to accept these grant funds.
Any discussion questions, Sherry?
No questions.
Mrs. Weaver.
I have no questions. No questions.
None.
Okay. Then I am seeking a motion to approve Dr. Marr's request.
I move to approve the acceptance of this grant and applicable budget and the submittal of the grant budget to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Dr. Marr, good deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. David Howard, purchase of mini desktop computers and monitors.
Good evening.
I've come to seek the approval for purchasing some computers. We're looking at purchasing 300 computers, and the computers that we are looking at purchasing, if approved, are the Lenovo. They're called the Tiny Form Factor Computers. They give us flexibility in how we actually mount them. We can mount them on the back of the monitors, the way we're proposing for this particular application for the schools. We're looking at upgrading. With the agenda item, we have three high schools and three elementary schools, and the total amount of computers are 307, and the approach we're going to use, the ones that are being purchased through the CTE program, the Career and Technical Education, would be going to the high schools, working with Mr. Boyle, and that is his recommended schools and the amount of labs he would like to replace. The other ones, we're using the Race to the Top grant to help us at some of our elementary schools. Elementary schools, as we all know, are some of the ones that have a lot of the older computers. So, this is a very good recommendation, I feel. It's going to help us get rid of computers that are like eight years old now. And if we get this, we put them in the high schools, we will then use those computers that were in the labs and get rid of some of the other eight-year-old machines that we have in the school system. The proposal, the computer price with the monitor, the cable, and mount comes at $624.06. We also have some capital projects, Spring Ridge Middle School and Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, that we would like to use this bid, which we went through the Maryland Educational Enterprise Consortium. We call it MEAC, and they have an approved vendor list, so we solicit using that contract vehicle. We've used it in the past, and we went through with finance, and we have the sheets here. So, we actually are going to make this award to multiple vendors to get the best price. Are there any questions that I can ask?
Ms. Reagan?
Answering.
I know the students will enjoy using new computers.
Great.
Mrs. Weaver.
I know that we currently lease computers. How, will these computers that are being placed into the high schools, because I know that we have a lease, you know, with the high schools and with, I think still with the middle schools, are these going to be replacing those computers?
These labs are going to help us replace some of the oldest computers that we have in the high schools. Some of them are leased. I think it's going to free up a lot of the other machines right now.
And really, the computers that we're talking about at the high school, they're going into the computer labs.
The computer labs.
They're replacing desktop units. The desktop units that they're replacing, I don't believe, the majority of them, they don't fall under that leasing agreement, correct?
No, there's not many desktops were leased.
No, no.
No laptops were leased.
Yes, yeah. So, this is an, so no matter what, this is an augmentation to the current number of computers that we have in our high schools and elementary schools.
And why did you choose the high school versus the middle school for the...
Working with Mr. Boyle, that I believe the CTE program is exclusively for high schools.
Right. The currently, the CTE programs and the courses that are offered are only at the high school level. So, these would be replacing specifically the CTE labs for the high schools.
And I know that you went out and got quotes on quantity of 540. Since you will be purchasing 307, will that change the price at all?
So, we could buy more possibly?
Well, no, because sometimes like if you buy a larger, if you're putting out for a larger quantity, it would be less than if you are getting a quote, let's say, on 300.
Some things have changed in the industry. Was that a... I was at a conference this week with the other CIOs of the state. Microsoft's changed their pricing strategy now, so this price is probably going to be better than we're going to see in the near future for a similar product. Microsoft is now charging K through 12, I mean, through the resellers. And some of the vendors are charging almost $100 a machine more. But we're locked in because we had this quote, so we could keep this price for, I think it's 18 months, for the next few months through the next fiscal year if we choose.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, those are my questions.
Mr. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Dunlop?
As you replace the computers at the high school for those units that are not as old, will you roll those into...
Absolutely.
That's what we've done in the past is, so the newest are going to the high school students, because typically the applications they're using are more complex, take greater graphics and that need additional speed. And then we kind of roll those older computers down so that we're constantly trying to keep everybody with the newest of whatever we can. The newest just may not be brand new.
And when we went through the park exercise, we looked at the data, where are the older computers right now that are in what we call core uses, the media center, the computer labs? What's needed so when we're able to bring in machines that were donated or from another area, we look at that data to place them now. So I want to use that same strategy here, as long as it's not, you know, some of them are bought with certain grants, you can't, you have to go through a process to put them somewhere else.
Right.
So that's what we're going to work with. And the funding source sometimes dictates where you're going to put the machines.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to approve.
I recommend that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approves the purchase of 307 computers for seven high school labs and three elementary school labs, based on the standard computer equipment configuration for a total cost of $191,586.42 from the lowest priced equipment suppliers identified on the attached price summary sheets. Further Board approval is requested to purchase additional computer equipment and accessories using the lowest priced items that are circled and identified by vendors on the attached price quote summaries on an as-needed basis and as funding permits for the purchase under $25,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. All right. Mr. Hartwick, some more furniture.
You're all going to be interior designers by the time we're done with this.
I can tell you anything about school furniture now, right?
There is no amount of magic in the world that could get past my inability to decorate.
You can't go wrong with a white wall.
All right, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Over the last couple of board meetings, we have requested and you have approved the use of the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Committee's Contract 2008-1 for the purchase of furniture at Spring Ridge Middle School. Tonight's action item is to use that same contract to save methodology for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. Similar to what we did at Spring Ridge, we worked very closely with the principal, Mr. D'Enzo. We had several sample desks and chairs brought in for evaluation. The timing worked out very well because Mr. D'Enzo was interviewing teachers, so he could get the opinion of the teachers about the style of desk and how they might be configured. We looked at a number of manufacturers, Smith Systems, who we have used before, a company called V/ S, which is actually based in Germany, but has a wonderful reputation for quality. And then finally, Arco Bell, based in Texas. By far, the most preferred student desk was the aperture-style furniture that has kind of a unique shape, and they nest together in all sorts of intriguing possibilities. One of the things we had was little puzzle pieces, and Mr. D'Enzo spent considerable amount of time just kind of laying out a typical classroom. So this is a configuration of three. That three can nest to another three, so you get six. Take one way is five, et cetera, et cetera. Again, universally, the teachers really responded well to that. You'll notice that the samples included casters, so you could basically pick it up and move it like a wheelbarrow. That, I think, promotes greater flexibility and grouping in the classroom, and is also very helpful for the operation staff as well. In your package, we provided you was a summary. We did ask for, based on the Baltimore Regional Contract, there's stated discount for Arco Bell products of 48.10%. As you see here, Glover has the lowest total price for student desks, tables and chairs at $162,283.07. That's well within our budget. You see from the pricing sheet that we're paying about $120-some for individual desks. We paid close to $140 per desk at Evergreen several years ago, so it's a very good value. The other advantages with Arco Bell is they do provide a lifetime warranty. And by choosing Arco Bell, we can pair it up with their chair, we can coordinate all those finishes. So when you walk into the classroom, it looks like it's very much part of the architecture of the building itself. The other thing that Arco Bell is providing is something they call the Guaranteed Ready Program. With your approval tonight, we're ready to issue a PO on these items. And they assure us that the furniture will be installed by the end of July 2015. So that's the selection, and I'll take your question.
Ms. Reed, did you have anything?
No, I think those desks look really interesting, so I'm excited to see how that works out. Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
Now, did you bring these into a classroom, and then the students tried them out, or...
We didn't do that. Mr. D'Enzo is located at the Lovell Annex, in one of the relocatables, so we set it up at that location. And then, once we kind of started evaluating the furniture in comparison, we took three of those desks to Captain Walter Francis Duke and reviewed the options, with Ms. Hall, who also concurred with the preference for this particular style desk.
Did any of the teachers have input for the, you know, what you came up with then? Like any of the, the elementary school teachers?
Yes, as I mentioned, Mr. D'Enzo was interviewing potential teachers. They were basically sitting at a location where these desks were, in other sample, so that they could, you know, test it out, as it were.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
I want to thank you for giving the teacher input, because I thought I heard you say that you got teacher input on this furniture, the desk. So thank you for doing that.
I was really intrigued when I was looking through the documentation that you provided, especially the various room layouts that you provided with those desks, so that you could really see the variety of ways. In looking at those, I have a feeling that teachers and students will more than likely discover other possibilities within the realm of the architecture of the desks. I like the fact that they are on adjustable legs, so that they will accommodate a range of student sizes. And the fact that the chairs look like they would be easily utilized with these, and also in a variety of ways. I think it'll be interesting to hear after the first year or so, did they really turn out to be as functional and as durable as we would like to think that they will be. And I also appreciate that you gave us the comparison of what a desk cost for Evergreen, and that you've been able to negotiate or to come up with a better price even for the desks here. And the fact that they will be available and in place when school starts. I know that in the past, we have had some issues with making sure that all of the furniture was in place as we were getting ready to open, so that's fantastic. Well done, and I think it's another, another positive about the principal being able to be in place and identified in a timely fashion, so that they are able to really have a very personal impact on the school moving forward. So, thank you. Very nicely done.
I think the one thing that Mr. Smith pointed out, we met earlier this week, is that the way that the three-person configuration is, is that new child is directly across from another one.
Right, there's a...
So for all of those elementary kids who are like, "Don't touch me," and all this, please eliminate.
We called it the "stop touching me" configuration. Stop touching me, stop touching me. I have three boys, so I've always struggled with how best to arrange things so that they're not necessarily looking at each other.
So I think, I think that is fabulous, because, you know, you go into a classroom and they're all just lined up right, like across from each other.
Nope.
So, could be a struggle.
Pinwheel.
Thank you very much.
Love it. Thank you, sir.
All right. So, Rita, since I...
Oh, Mary can read.
Don't touch me.
Yeah, Mary can read.
I need a motion, please.
Mary, go ahead. Oh, okay. Let me make sure I'm on the correct one. And I like the lifetime guarantee as well. Now, what exactly does that mean? No, 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 really legally, what does that mean, lifetime? Does that mean 50 years? Does it mean forever? What does it mean?
You know, I'll have to look more closely at the warranty. I'm not quite sure how to answer that. We'll have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah, because sometimes it doesn't mean forever and keep going on and on in perpetuity. I just wanted to know, but thank you. Okay. I move that the Board of Education approves the use of the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee's bid number 2008-01 with Glover for student desks, tables and chairs for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, in the amount of $162,283.07.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Washington, we're really thinking about lifetime, and that we started discussing 140-year-old person still going strong, so, you know, we really want to do look at that warranty, because...
That's a good point, though. That's right.
Yeah.
If they like times.
Mm-hmm.
You're right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And with that, the next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, May 13th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m., and we are adjourned.
Thank you.